Good evening and welcome to the June 8th, 2020 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have two items for discussion. The first one is an update on our stormwater program. And then the second one is a presentation on the city's phased service restoration plan. So joining us now to give us an update on our stormwater program, we have Beth Forbes, Michael Wayan, and Michael Johnson, all from our Public Works Department. Beth, Mike, take it away.
Thank you. Tonight's update on the stormwater program has three different parts. The first part is for mostly for people at home to explain what stormwater is, why it's important. The second part is about the staff responsibilities in the stormwater program. And the third concerns the stormwater program fee and the rate model. Next. So why do we need stormwater? There's two basic objectives. One is water quality and one is water quantity. So for water quality, we are dealing with contaminants. And a lot of times people think of those as chemicals, but it also can be nutrients like phosphorus and nitrogen. For water quantity, we're talking about slowing down the rate of flow after rain. So this is flooding and to reduce erosion on the stream banks. Next. And so when we talk about water quality, we want to soak the water through a filter. It could be the soil, it could be sand, it could be a proprietary device underneath the ground that you don't even see. When we're talking about water quantity, next. Then we're using some sort of control to slow down the water so it doesn't overwhelm our streams. Next. So water quantity is a pretty local concept, but water quality has far ranging regional impacts. This photo of the Chesapeake Bay from a satellite shows a snow pack at the northern part of Maryland. And next. When that snow melted a few weeks later, it brought with it all sorts of sediment. So much sediment that you can see it from a satellite photo. Next. The type of surface the rain falls on impacts how much stormwater you get. The city is about 39% impervious. So when the water falls on things like turf or trees, it tends to not run off immediately into the streams. It stays on the leaves of the trees, it gets evaporated. Whereas when water falls on the 61% of the city that's impervious, it tends to run off very quickly and take some of the pollutants that might be in on our roads or rooftops or parking lots with it into the streams. The amount of impervious surface is very important when we're talking about stormwater. The next slide has some stormwater management practices that you can see around the city. The top row are conventional structural practices and the bottom row are more alternative practices. The top right is a bio retention facility on Rabbit Road. So the engineered soil collects the rainwater from the road and filters it and the plants take up the nutrients. That's a quality control device or practice. The center top photo is a dry pond, which sounds like an oxymoron, but when it rains, this pond takes all the runoff from the nearby hard surfaces, the rooftops and the roads, and this pond fills up and slowly over a day or two, the water gets into the stream, but not so far as much as to erode the stream banks. The top right hand photo is the Pond at Rio. A wet pond can provide both water quality and quantity control. On the lower left is the city's street sweeper, and that's one of the ways to get credits towards our MS4 program is to remove the contaminants from the stream, from the streets before they get to the stream. You can get credits for that. The center photo is a storm drain inlet, and these tend to collect debris. We have a storm drain cleaning program, but we haven't really talked about yet how to get credits from that. The bottom right picture is a stream restoration of Medi Branch that's near West Deer Park. And if you're not viewing this on a tablet, you might be able to see the stone on the left bank, and that's keeping the muddy branch from further eroding the stream bank. And that's, you can get water quality credits for that. Next. So I like my final slide in the first section, I want to go over just some history of stormwater. 1972, the Clean Water Act was passed, and that's a National Water Quality Act, but that doesn't come into play in Gaithersburg for a little while. In 1975, Gaithersburg had its first stormwater program, and it was a water quantity program. So if you see subdivisions from that era, you'll see a lot of dry ponds as because that's what stormwater was back then. 1985, the entire state was required to have a quantity program. In the 90s, the EPA started regulating jurisdictions. In the 70s and 80s, they mostly focused on point sources from industry, from factories and from wastewater treatment plants. But in the 90s, they started looking at stormwater runoff, the contaminants from stormwater as being a point source, and they started regulating larger jurisdictions with more than 100,000 population. In the 2000s, they started regulating smaller jurisdictions. In 2003, Gaithersburg got its first permit and at that same time, signed on with Montgomery County Government's Water Quality Protection Charge to help pay for the requirements. When we knew the second permit was coming soon, we hired a consultant to give us some recommendations for charging a stormwater program fee. And in 2015, the city started the program fee when it knew that the second permit was on its way. The second permit, the second generation permit got here in 2018. Next. So now I'm going to talk about what the staff in the stormwater program do. One of the things they do is work on the MS4 Phase 2 permit. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. A phase 2 means we're a smaller jurisdiction. It's a five-year permit, and it has two years at the end to cover finishing up projects that might have gotten delayed along the way. There's two primary requirements, and one is to meet six minimum control measures, and the other is to restore 20% of the untreated impervious surfaces. The last year, we used the GIS, and we figured out where all the facilities were now and what they, what impervious area they were treating, and then we could see what impervious area wasn't getting treated and figured out what, how many acres of untreated impervious surfaces we would need to get treated in the five-year period. Next. So there's annual reporting with this permit. For year one was FY19. We submitted a report last fall with our impervious baseline and a work plan like how we were going to get to meet our acreage goal. And this year in October, we'll report on FY20. We'll update our baseline and our restoration plan. And the second and fourth years, we're required to report on MCMs. Next. So what is an MCM? One example is an illicit discharge detection and elimination program. So we need to inspect all the outfalls to make sure there isn't any illicit discharge going on into our storm drain system. We need to have a program for people to report hazardous waste spills and methods to clean them up. Some photos here are a oil spill at the Old Town Garage on the right. The top left is an algae bloom in the Pond at Rio that probably happened when someone used too much fertilizer. And the bottom left is paint that got, found its way into a micro pool. That's a water quality control device practice in Victory Farm. Next. Another MCM is having a public outreach and education program. So each year, we have Green Up Day and Green Month, and we also man the booths at different festivals throughout the year. We need to keep track of how many times we talk to people, how many people show up at our stream cleanup events. Next. Another part of the outreach is a Chesapeake Bay Trust grant partnership. So the city provides the funds and the Chesapeake Bay Trust administers the grants. And we reach out to nonprofits throughout the city to help them fund watershed outreach programs and restoration projects. Next. And here's some of the nonprofits that have been funded over the last couple of years. There's a sister program to this, this nonprofit program called Rainscapes, and we offer some funding to help people put in rain barrels or bio retention facilities at their own houses, single family and townhouses. Next. Another part of the stormwater program is making sure that all the new development meets the state stand, state stormwater design manual. So we review plans and work well with the plan, planning and code administration. This photo is a bio retention facility at FedEx. We also support the city's projects, make sure that their stormwater requirements are met. The Chapter 8 of the city code is where all the requirements for the stormwater program and IDD are. And one of the things we're looking at is to propose amendments to that to bring Chapter 8 up to date, and we hope to bring that to you by the end of the year. And next. Another part of the things that this, we do here in the stormwater group are the storm drains, because there's storm drains that bring the rainwater to the facilities and from the facilities out to the stream. Most of them are concrete and/or corrugated metal. The concrete ones tend to have problems when the joints come loose. And the picture here is within the city of Gaithersburg, but it's on private property, and the joints between two segments of concrete pipe have come loose and made a big sinkhole. The water's no longer conveying water to the stream. So this is where we work with neighborhood services with private property who need to rehab some of their stormwater infrastructure. The corrugated metal pipes were very popular in the 60s and 70s, and those are pretty much at the end of their useful life. So that's something that we want to look into replacing. Next. We have a number of state regulated dams in the city. All of them need to be inspected and made sure there's no vegetation on the embankments that could cause the embankments to fail and be a safety issue. The larger ponds get inspected by the state every year, and the state also expects us to update our emergency action plans for each of those. The picture on the bottom right is a concrete pipe that's under Edison Park Drive. From the inside, it looks like this joint is leaking. So there's a lot of repairs with these larger, larger facilities too. Next. We respond to drainage issues when citizens called. We do monitoring of our stream restoration projects. This is Mike at Muddy Branch. We need to go out annually to show that the restoration is stable. So that's the end of my second part. The third part of my presentation concerns the stormwater program fee and its rate model. So a lot of the program fee goes to pay for the MS4 permit costs, primarily delivering the new capital facilities needed to get to that 20% goal. But they, we also need to validate the current facility. So the facilities that we said is already treating the impervious area, we need to make, we need to inspect them and validate them, make sure that they really actually are providing the treatment that they do. We might have to make some decisions whether it's not worth it to continue to count a particular facility, maybe it might be cheaper instead of retrofitting a facility is to have another project, a capital project someplace else. We need to think about how the state's credit accounting is going to change. We got our permit issued in April 2018 and a year, I think that even a month later, no, a year later, they, they changed how stream restorations are credited. It used to be like you got one acre credit for every 100 feet you restored, and then they changed it to you get three acres of credit for every 100 feet. So there have been other changes like that, and we could probably expect some other changes in the credit accounting over the term of the permit. These alternative credits like street sweeping aren't quite the same as, as the facilities. We need to tell them each year how much street sweeping we do, and then they average it over the five-year permit term. Whereas if we have a built facility, we inspect it every three years and it gets that credit, that area is considered, considered treated as long as the facility is operating properly. We'd like to look at having some grant program projects, be able to get credits for our program. Next. The bottom line with these credits is it's not a straight line. It's not like we're here and we're going there. There's going to be a lot of iterations over the permit term. So next. There's other program costs that we haven't really talked about. We touched on the inspections a little bit, but there are other minimum control measures. We talked about the storm drain and dam repairs. We had watershed studies done for the entire city in 2013 and 14, and they recommended some of the capital projects that we're working on now. But if we're going to be looking at for like another five or 10 years on what the rate should be, we might want to include some funding for additional watershed plans, because the ones we have will be like 10 or 15 years old by that time. Last week, you approved a new project in the CIP for a headwater drainage study. So that's another thing that we'll, we use our funds for, and we talked about development review. So in 2014, when we had a consultant determine what's a good, how to organize a rate model, they used a number of assumptions. And if you go to the next slide, here are some of the things that they, they assumed. Because the city is pay-go, they thought the stormwater fund should have some capital and operating reserves. So over the first five years, they planned to, they suggested and we adopted to, to collect seven years of program costs. So in case we needed a reserve for some reason, we would have them. They assumed that the permits after the second generation permit that was underway would also be another 20% of the impervious area, another 20%. And that was an assumption they made. They assumed that the asset management program would start in the first year. We would start an inlet and culvert cleaning program the first year. The inspection program would start in the second year and pipe replacement in the third year. They used the capital project cost estimates from the watershed studies to figure out what the capital project delivery costs would be over the five years, and they assumed it would be fully staffed. But the reality was a little different. Next slide. The reserves were collected, but now we know that the future permit is not likely to be another 20% impervious area treated. The asset management program should start soon. The inlet program didn't begin when year one, but it's been underway for a while. The inspection program has been intermittent. We were starting that up now, pretty full steam. The pipe replacement program was never started. Some of the costs from the watershed plan were spot on, but others were a little bit underestimated, and we haven't always been fully staffed. So we would like to hire a consultant to give us some recommendations for updating our stormwater fee model sometime this summer, and then come back to you in the fall with suggestions for a couple of different scenarios for the rate model for the future. Next. One thing we recommend being the same is using the same impervious surface billing methodology. So right now, for every 500 square feet of impervious area on a property, that's one billing unit. And each year, the mayor and council sets the billing unit for the following fiscal year. We'd like them to update our programs' costs and our assumptions that we made, anticipate the future costs, and help us better understand how these, how the path to getting to our 20% goal is going to be a series of iterations. We want to develop a few different rate scenarios with the consultant and present them to you in the fall. But one thing that we need your input from today is how to deal with HOAs. So when a property is subdivided, the developer is required to put all the stormwater controls on the property as, as part of getting his approvals. Those on a subdivision, it's usually passed on to the HOA to maintain and operate. There's two different kinds of maintenance. One is the structural maintenance. It's the more expensive maintenance. That's removing the sediment, replacing a concrete that might be spalled, something like that. And there's the aesthetic maintenance, which is keeping the area mowed, keeping the vegetation off the embankment and then removing the trash. So next slide. What we've seen is that sometimes the city has gone in and assisted different HOAs. They've retrofit HOA ponds, they've taken over HOA ponds completely. I've found recently some instances where the HOA actually never operated and owned the pond. The property with the pond was conveyed to the city even before the HOA was formed. We've had some HOAs request assistance because the city has helped other HOAs. And before we start doing something along those lines, we want the mayor and council to approval, and we want to make sure it's as equitable as possible. We might, there's some, there's one jurisdiction that has taken over all HOA, but that's, that's certainly on the table. But you could also decide to take over a certain type of facility. You could decide to take over facilities that can be retrofit and, and get credits towards our MS4 permit. Or another thing you might want to look at is HOA's ability to pay for the retrofits, because we know that there are some small HOAs out there that have a facility that's past its useful life, it would really have to be completely rebuilt, and that HOA probably doesn't have the funding to do that. What we do know is that there are four HOA retrofits that are in the capital budget now that are owned by different HOAs. And when I say HOAs, there, I think there's one or two condominium associations that also have these. So when I use term HOA, it can be either. So we would like to have the consultant look at a no action alternative and two or three different options for assisting HOAs with their facilities. Next slide. So here's a couple of ideas. When you could do where the city takes over the structural maintenance of all HOA facilities, but the HOAs continue to mow them and remove trash. That will have an impact on the stormwater program fee, and that's what we would have the consultant look at. Next. Another option would be for the city to fund and manage a retrofit of the facilities that aren't operating to standards. And then once that is done, the HOA would continue all the maintenance, structural maintenance and the mowing and trash, and that would have an impact to the stormwater fee too. Next. And this one is the no action alternative, where HOAs retain the full ownership and maintenance responsibility, and the city would probably have to spend a little bit more time enforcing the stormwater requirements on some of the HOAs, which should have little or no impact on the stormwater fee. So next slide. So where we open it up to your suggestions, what kind of HOA options should we give to the consultant, and any other parameters you might be interested in looking at when we have the consultant look at updating our rate model? Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I'll start off with the first, thank you for putting together the, this presentation. It's been a while since we've, we've dived into stormwater, no pun intended. And I think it's, it's such a big program, it's such a big requirement to meet these, to get this permit, that it's very healthy that we periodically discuss it in detail. So I guess my question is, if we were to assume, let's just assume we took on all of the stormwater facilities, HOA or not, all of the ones in the city. What's, is there an estimated financial impact to that?
Well, that's what we want them, the consultant, to tell us. We want to give them like two or three different scenarios, and they would figure out, use some assumptions again, but give us an idea of how that would impact the fee rate.
Yeah, I think as, it would be nice if we could work with the HOAs and the HOAs could self-fund the upkeep, the maintenance and the, and the retrofitting of their stormwater facilities. I don't know how realistic that is or not. I, you know, I speak from, I'm in one of those small HOAs. I'm not, I don't know if we have any stormwater facilities in this, in this community or not, but I know that there's a certain amount of reserves that our HOA keeps on, on hand, and there's a limitation to how much the HOA is allowed to raise dues each year. And so if we were hit with this unexpected thing, it'd be very, very difficult for the HOA to meet that requirement. So just as a matter of practicality, it could be very difficult. The other, the other issue I look at in that scenario is, I don't know how the state or how we're, how we're supposed to be measuring outcomes of this 20% reduction. But if HOA, you know, HOA facilities are obviously contributing to the quality and the quantity of stormwater that's going through the system. And so I don't know if that would like impact our ability to meet the, the requirement. I don't know. But obviously, you know, as, as you said, as we're as a pay-as-you-go government, we have, we have this nice tradition, and the unfortunate part about this is there's an unknown cost. The only thing we know is that there are large costs associated with this retrofitting. So I guess I would want to see, I'd want to see, one of the options would be if we, if we just took on all the responsibility for the retrofitting of these stormwater facilities, and then we can break it down in some other ways too, but at least we should know what the, sort of the worst case scenario is. Neil, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'd caveat, I'd agree with everything you just said with one caveat, that when you say all, we don't want to be responsible for collecting the trash and mowing the lawns around these facilities, all right? I think the HOAs are already doing that, and have probably wired that into their cost models, but the rest should definitely be considered. Is it okay if I continue and ask a couple of questions?
Go right ahead.
All right, thanks. Two things. One is that in your presentation, you said that going back to, I think it was 2003, we opted into a county-wide water quality charge of some kind. And in more recent times, we added our own fee for the stormwater programs that we're doing directly. Is that original water quality charge still in effect, or did we replace it with our own charge?
We replaced it with our own charge, but the county still charges that same water quality protection charge.
Do they, they charge it to residents of Gaithersburg?
No.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I was looking for. All right. And the other question, kind of a big picture question on the money side. In the original stormwater program that we put in place, as you mentioned, we agreed to collect seven years' worth of money over five years to build up a two-year reserve. So on that basis, even if costs go up for what we need to do to another 20% or whatever we're asked to do, or if we take on extra stormwater facilities like the HOAs, presumably we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't need to build higher reserves, so the cost should be somewhat balanced by that, I would expect. Does that seem reasonable?
Seems reasonable.
All right. That's all, all I can hope for at this point. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great presentation, by the way. That was a really good background and, you know, covered all the bases.
Thank you.
I'm muted, sorry. Let's go to Mike, then Rob, then Ryan.
All right, so I, you know, I, it was a very nice presentation, pretty complete and comprehensive. I just have a couple of questions that you didn't cover. You know, I think I probably know the answers, but I think it's, it's important for the rest of the
You know, I think I probably know the answers, but I think it's, it's important for the rest of the council and the, and the public to know about, so. We have not just HOAs, but we also have businesses and we also have public entities such as MCPS, the state and the county, who also have to manage stormwater on their property. What's our relationship with them in terms of their support of our fee? As I recall, they don't provide any of the, they don't pay any of the fees, correct?
That's a good question for Dennis.
Okay, so, well, related to that, how, and in their own management, how much of their management causes, might cause problems for us or their lack thereof?
So, you're talking about the county or the MCPS?
Talking about all of that, all of those entities that aren't the city or a private entity, homeowner or HOA.
Or HOAs, or, well, they all get inspected. And I guess that's the things we need to do with, in this permit term, is have an MOU with DEP. Because they need to inspect their facilities on their properties and MCPS properties and make sure we have that information so we can include it in our annual report. Yes, those facilities were inspected.
Okay, but that should be done at no cost to the city then, right?
For, for county and?
For their own management, they, you know, we're not going to incur any, any cost for their management responsibilities, right?
Right.
So, Mike, to go back and address your question about which entities pay the fee. We actually have a MOU or memorandum of understanding with the county for just county properties. They do pay the fee assessed by the city. They play it as a straight fee usually every year. We bill them collectively rather than on each parcel. The school district believes they are exempt from the fee, so that's always been a discussion point. So, they do not pay any of the fees associated with the school sites. Any other entity like WSSC or, you know, electric company, Pepco, they would pay their fee for, just like any other person would based upon the calculation. As Beth kind of pointed out, they do their own inspections, at least the county does their own inspections, and then WSSC is required to do some inspections because they have industrial permits. So, most of that cost is covered by their own entity, not by the city.
Oh, so let me follow up then. That, I mean, that's all good to know and I think I recall most of that, but I think it was important for everybody to hear that again. So, this issue about taking over a facility from, from an HOA. And I guess we're at, you know, the range of what we've done here varies, I believe. So, when we do that, is there an upfront cost that we expect them to reimburse the city for us doing that? Or is there an annual cost that we expect an HOA to provide, even if it's minimal? You know, to recognize that the city, that basically the taxpayer of the city are subsidizing their facility and their, their stormwater management.
That could be an alternative to look at. One thing I'd like to point out, there are some large subdivisions that don't have stormwater controls. Because when they were subdivided, they said that a regional city pond would be providing their stormwater.
Right.
So, that becomes an issue, like you're charging one HOA for the city to handle their stormwater just because they did have a facility at one time that the city, and then there's another subdivision that never had them because they use the cities, so.
But doesn't every resident in that, in that community, that neighborhood pay, pay a fee?
They all pay a fee.
They all pay a fee, correct? So, in a way, I mean, I live in a non-HOA community, neighborhood, and as, you know, I assume we are all, all of my neighbors are all paying the same fee or, you know, close to it. And that's what the city uses to maintain the facilities that, you know, that they're, that the city's responsible for. So, you know, in a way, everybody pays whether the facility is owned by the HOA or by, or managed by the city. And I guess presumably, if we take it over, then we become the owners of the facility?
That's an option. So, there's been one HOA where we retrofit two of their ponds, but they retained ownership and they retained the structural maintenance too.
Okay, so yeah, and I think the, the maintenance that we talked about, grass cutting, trash removal, said or should be that responsible, they're responsible especially if we don't become the owners of it, so.
But this one particular HOA that did get retrofit, they're doing all their maintenance.
Okay.
They're responsible for the structural maintenance and aesthetic maintenance.
So, whether, yeah, so that kind of agreement between us and another, and a community like that is going to be different than one where they just say, we're going to wash our hands of this, no pun intended, and hand it over to the city, right?
Well, it's up to the mayor, which, which options you want to look at and which ones you want to choose.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Rob, and then Ryan, and then Loriann.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Beth, for your presentation. It's very informative. I don't have much to add, actually, just to follow up on what Mike was talking about. So, under the current structure where residents pay impervious surface fees, stormwater fees based on their impervious surfaces, then HOAs are paying to maintain either structural or cosmetic, whatever the agreement may be. Are the HOAs in fact paying more then because their residents are paying the stormwater management fees? And then, they're also paying HOA fees to maintain structural and aesthetic aspects that are within their jurisdiction?
Yes, we do have a program of stormwater fee credits, but so far, only one subdivision has applied and been approved. So, they have to have an engineer inspected, say that it's operating as it's designed, it is treating that area. And then, we run through the, after you approve the budget and then we have a new stormwater credit rate, we run through all the new impervious area and figure out what their credits are going to be.
Okay, and so that'll just play into what my overarching concern would be for the various options. I support the three options that you are suggesting is whatever we think about at the, at the city level has to be equitable across the city. And, but in order to do that, we need the facts and the data to figure out what the right course of action is, so. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Rob. We'll go to Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor. My concerns are similar to what Mike and Rob have already raised. We're at this point being asked to consider a very limited question of what, you know, potential models we might want to see more information about, and that's all. As opposed to making a decision on which of those models we actually want to adopt. And, you know, I'm, I'm concerned with equity as well, but you can look at this in a lot of different ways, from a lot of different angles. What Mike was saying earlier, and I think the point that Rob was trying to underscore is, yes, everybody pays the stormwater fee based on their impervious surface on their lot. But people who live in HOAs, at least theoretically, also pay their HOA dues and fees, which go towards, at least in part, in theory, towards the maintenance of stormwater infrastructure owned by the HOA that the HOA is responsible for. So, you could make the argument that people who live in HOAs, assuming that the HOA is actually doing the maintenance and collecting a fee from its residents and applying that fee appropriately, that they're sort of being, for lack of a better word, double taxed.
It's not a tax, Ryan, it's not a tax.
Not a tax. But they're being charged basically once for the city's stormwater fee and once separately for the HOA maintenance. And we may decide that for a variety of reasons, that's okay, because the stormwater fee goes to the collective overall needs of the city to deal with its stormwater management obligations and improvement of the environment and the waterways. But we sort of need to figure out how we're going to acknowledge that reality. That's the first sort of question and whether or not there's an equity element there. The second, in my view, is how does this all sort of relate to those non-residential private property or other governmental properties that Mike talked about for stormwater facilities that they might take advantage of within the city that aren't necessarily owned and operated either by the city government or by a residential HOA? And, you know, how do we deal with the distinction, if it's even possible to make the distinction, between those HOAs who have not been able to maintain or retrofit or upgrade their stormwater facilities through no fault of their own, because of all kinds of external factors, lack of resources, from those who might have been able to, but just didn't do it? And, you know, should we even be getting into the weeds of trying to distinguish between them? Because, you know, I think there are probably some who fit in some, one category and some who might arguably fit into another. And there are HOAs out there who have already invested in trying to meet those requirements. And how do we acknowledge their prior investment if we're going to bail out other HOAs who haven't made that investment? So, it becomes very complicated when we're trying to treat everybody as equitably as we can, while still acknowledging the idea of having a stormwater management fund and a permit and a process that is citywide is not about trying to serve any one particular subdivision or any one particular subsection of the city. It's really about meeting the city's overall goals, and so you sort of have to separate it out. So, between that challenge and all these other questions that I have, I just am a little queasy about the idea of us coming in and taking over, you know, whatever facilities might need to be taken over regardless of how they got to that point, without really carefully figuring out, you know, what is the fiscal impact? And what is the fairness question for residents of our city who live in different accommodations, different setups with HOAs or not with HOAs? And how they've managed to either invest or not invest in stormwater infrastructure over time? So, I'm just a little hesitant about it. Do I think at this point it would be okay for a consultant to come in and at least price it out, show us what it looks like? Sure, that's fine. But when it comes time to make that decision, I just, I think we ought to think really carefully before we jump, you know, you know, with both feet into that, into that possibility of having to take over every single private HOA stormwater facility in the city. I think that's going to be a really, really big challenge if we have to do that. And I'll just take a moment to plug the fact that if we had something like a commission on common ownership communities that applied in the city of Gaithersburg, maybe we'd have a little bit more training and support for those homeowners association boards that would have had to deal with this in the past that weren't able to. So, something to think about as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. We'll go to Loriann.
Thank you, sir. Thank you again for the presentation. I thought it was very thorough and informative. I don't want to repeat some of the questions of my colleagues, but I just was curious about what the associated cost, the fiscal impact of each option would be. And since I don't know how long this consultant's work will take to survey, assess, determine repairs for each of the HOAs, will we share those costs? The Ryan mentioned, depending on what where the actual stormwater facility, like what their, what's the word I'm looking for? Like what, how many improvements need to be made to the particular facilities? And how that varies across HOA and condo facilities? And so, I think it's, I agree that the three options are really good to consider, and I don't know if I can necessarily make a decision until we see like what the fiscal impacts of each option would be and how those fees would be spread across each HOA. And are we sharing in the cost to get them ready and then a flat fee afterwards? Or that's, that's what I'm still confused about.
So, the three options that I presented are three of many, many options, just to give you an idea of the range of them. So, I would think you would always keep the no action option as one of your three or four different options. So, I've given you two others as just possibilities, but you could really look at pretty much anything.
So, how long will it be?
As a, as a particular size, you would, you know, if you had so many members in the HOA, we would. If you had a larger HOA, we wouldn't. There's dozens of different iterations. I just gave a couple. So, we hope to give, but we don't want to have the consultant look at two dozen different options, even though there's probably more than that. So, we wanted to have your input on, on outlining two or three different ones that they'll actually work through the costs. And so, I don't think they're going to, to like look at any one particular facility or any one HOA, but just as a general appraisal of different ways you could go about organizing your rate model with different HOA policies.
Okay, and are we also looking at other jurisdictions to see how they are managing so that when we get this information, we can compare it, how they are?
We only know one jurisdiction who's taken over all their HOA facilities, whenever the HOA facilities. I used to manage projects for that jurisdiction. They took over a lot of facilities that they thought could be retrofit. And when they got into design, they got 30 to 60% design. They realized they couldn't meet dam standards. They, it was going to be a high hazard dam. They didn't want to deal with that. So, they had to, they had a lot of sunk costs in the design on, on things. The maintenance people weren't very happy with having to maintain really facilities that were past their life lifecycle, but they had agreed to take them on and they were maintaining things that really needed to be completely retrofit, but they couldn't be retrofit and get credits. They could be dismantled or they could be retrofit just for a quantity. But there was no way in the space available to get want quality credits for a retrofit for these.
Okay, so how long do you think the process would take on average for the consultant to do this work and assess the three options we're proposing and come back to us?
We've been, we're scoping out a contract for them. We hope to get a consultant on board this summer and come back in the fall and present the, the next version of the rate model.
Okay.
And probably with a couple of different HOA options to choose from.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Loriann. Dennis and Mike Johnson. So, these three options seem, seem fine. And we'll, we'll get to in a second, Neil. These three options seem fine. I, you know, given that it's not this kind of evaluation, we can, we all see the value in, in it. And some very good points have been brought up about costs and about equity. If there are any in your professional opinion, as we move toward getting this consulted, any other options that you think would make sense, I think it would, we would appreciate it. Keeping in mind the comments that you've gotten about, about costs and about equity and about practicability and all that kind of stuff. Do you guys feel comfortable just sort of eyeballing it? And if you have some other kind of solutions that take some of these things into consideration, that maybe we would add to these three options?
Hi, Mary. Yes, we do. You know, we, we had a portfolio of options, as Beth mentioned. And we sort of narrowed it down to those three, but with the feedback that we got from council, which was very, very good discussion, it sort of helped us to sort of identify, will help us to identify additional options that we could have the consultant look at or refine. Maybe not totally new options, but maybe a refinement to an existing option. And our goal would be to be able to come back to you in the fall, to come back to you in the fall where we have, you know, you can sort of look at the different what-if scenarios. So, that if you took over HOAs and parsed, parsed them by size, even if that's a very blunt way to do it. Like if you took like Hidden Creek, which is a large, large HOA versus some of the tiniere ones, which have, you know, extensive structural practices on the ground. There, there has to be, maybe you'll end up with like an index, some kind of a cost index that ultimately allows for rational decisions to be made. And then, once we present that to you, our goal is to really give you information so you can help us. our goal is to really give you information so you can help us formulate the policy that would make it into chapter eight and allow us to execute.
Sounds good. Thank you, Michael. Neil, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I have a, a big question and then a comment. So let's start with the big question first. So MCPS and Montgomery County government say that they are exempt. I'm, I'm not sure if Montgomery County is correct, but I know MCPS believes that they are exempt from our stormwater fees. Does that mean that they are required to perform their own work comparable to what we need to do under our permit? And if that's the case, should they just not be counted as part of our acreage?
It's a little bit more, I'll let Beth kind of explain because there's underlying, there's actually multiple permits within the jurisdiction of the corporate boundaries. So yes, they are responsible for their own maintenance. And Beth can kind of talk a little bit about some of the complexities that all the jurisdictions are running into when you have multiple permits in a given particular area.
So are you saying that MCPS has a permit of their very own?
Yes, MCS has a permit that's actually administered by the county at this particular point in time. And then the county has their, also has their own permit. And in reality, WSSC has their own permit. State Highway has their own permit. So when the state set this up, it wasn't necessarily, you know, every permit excludes all the other permits. Beth, you might add a little bit more in terms of what complexity that has added to the process.
Well, most of these properties inside the city count against our impervious acreage. So even though they're a permutee, it's, it's still part of our impervious surface.
Even though they have their own permit and are required to do their own work, does their permit only cover ground in unincorporated parts of the county? Or how is that where it sounds like the, whoever the permitting agency is, is double dipping here or something along those lines?
I agree. It's confusing.
Okay, it's one of the unresolved issues with the phase two permits. Because a lot of the other entities are actually phase one permies and were a phase two permitting.
Yeah, I would think that the position that I would recommend off the top of my head would be that we shouldn't be responsible, so it shouldn't count against our permit, but I'll let you guys deal with that. So let me come to my comment, which is the discussion about, about equity and fairness in terms of taking over the other facilities. Basically, my position is the, the, excuse me, I have to say goodnight to my son. Goodnight, Sam.
Stop.
All right, go, go. All right, excuse me for the interruption. Apparently, one of our fire smoke detectors is beeping and is bothering him too. So I'm going to may have to disappear for a moment. So the comment is that I think we should consider the status quo today for all HOAs and city facilities to be equitable. Basically, every community, every subdivision that was created, every common ownership community. Good night, Sam. I'm in the middle of something. Thank you. Anyway, I think we should consider the status quo to be fair. Every, every community that was created, there was a negotiation between the developer and the city that resulted in the current situation. And everybody's was comfortable with it at the time. So that, that makes, that'll make it simpler to say, you know, every, every relationship that we want to build with a common ownership community in terms of taking over a facility potentially would be a one-off negotiation about what's involved in taking on their facility, what the costs might be, what the current status is and things like that. So I don't think worrying about what went on in the past and who's got what facilities is, is a useful exercise. I think we just want to worry about what happens going forward. And the second point in terms of the value of even considering taking on other facilities is that many of these homeowners, homeownership communities are probably not capable of properly maintaining these facilities going forward, especially with the new standards. They're probably more expensive and engineering wise, more complex than a smaller common ownership community could really be expected to deal with. So from that point of view, if we want the stormwater to be taken care of properly, it behooves us to get involved to some level. If an inspector comes through and says that the system is failing, I, I don't think leaving it to a small HOA would be likely to be result in the kind of outcome that we're looking for. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this point, but I, this would normally be the time where I would call for testimony from the public, but nobody has signed up. I will, I will remind everybody who's watching that we will take your comp. You, you can email in your comments and we'll consider them just like any written, any oral testimony. So just send it to cityhall@gaitersburgmd.gov. Does anybody have any final comments or questions before we move on to the next discussion item? Not seeing any. Okay. Thank you all very much. Beth, Michael, Michael. Appreciate it, guys. Great presentation. Next, we're going to talk about the city's planned reopening and Dennis is going to lead us in that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, I wanted to provide an update on the city's phased restoration service plans to you and to the community. The presentation I'm making tonight is actually a condensed version of what you can find in the mayor and city council packet information and will be posted on the city's website. Of course, you know, as part of the COVID nineteen pandemic, the city has been able to maintain its essential services and continue to offer a wide range of services through virtual connections with the community. We believe the health and safety of our employees and the residents is the highest priority for the city. And as the state and Montgomery County begin to allow for greater activity under their respective executive orders, the city will gradually begin restoring services that have been put on hold. Next slide. Over the past couple of months, staff has been actively preparing for reopening of our facilities. We have been cleaning the facilities, sourcing and ordering PPE or personal protection equipment. Appropriate wellness, these guards and shields have been installed. And we have developed specific operational plans for each of the departments. As we move forward into the phases, the city will be following the advice and direction of both the state of Maryland and Montgomery County Health Departments. And we have been actively reviewing CDC and OSHA guidelines as they are developed and provided to us. I do want to stress that the plan presented tonight is still very fluid and we will need to adapt to changing conditions we encounter during the COVID epidemic. And we'll be making updates to this presentation through the website should we need to. Tonight, I'm going to present some, the general phasing along with some specific comments about community events. And then kind of go over some of the highlights of each of the facilities that you'll see in our organization. Phase one, which will begin on June fifteenth, will have the opening of core buildings such as the Activity Center, City Hall, Police Station, Public Works through appointments. We will also still be asking individuals to conduct business through our virtual platforms to the extent feasible. And legislative meetings such as the mayor and city council meetings and the planning commission will continue to be held virtually. We've also begun to restart committee meetings in a virtual platform through the use of teleconference calls. Next slide. In terms of phase one, we will be asking for standard safety protocols from the residents when they visit sites and they would be required to wear face masks, practice physical distancing and we would be adhering to additional cleaning measures. As part of phase two, next slide. It is important to note that when we go to phase two, not all the services will be available at the very beginning of phase two. There are a number of variable start dates depending on the circumstances. We have not yet determined a date, start date for phase two. But in core buildings, we would be allowing the public to attend in a walk-in basis. No more appointments would be required. The city would also open up additional facilities such as the youth centers for specific uses. And while meetings will likely continue virtually for a while, the city will begin to reevaluate whether we can safely hold them in person and on what type of meetings and gathering criterias that are in place by the state or Montgomery County. Next slide. We will continue to ask the residents to abide by safety protocols in place such as the face mask and physical distancing and additional cleaning measures will still be in place during phase two. The next slide, which covers phase three. This is anticipated to be the new normal operations where the city facilities will be open as they were previous to the COVID epidemic. We all know that things are changing in our own environments. And so we do anticipate some minor changes to how we operate, hopefully to the better where we allow more services that are online and those continue to be offered online. There may be the need for still health and safety protocols. We just don't know at this time. On the next slide, as we move through, again, I just want to reiterate many of the services we've already been providing in a virtual capacity. And we will continue to explore those services and continue them as we move through the phases. You, you can get more information on our website, gaithersburgmd.gov. And as I indicated before, I just really want to stress because again, all of this is predicated on having some knowledge of how the state or the county is going to move forward in their own phases. That we will be basing this on their recommendations and that we may need to make additional requirements within our own city to restore services in a phased fashion. Next slide. In terms of special events, as you know, decisions will be made on an individual basis for all future events. We did make some announcements today. For instance, we announced that the July fourth celebration or Summer Fest would not be held in person. It would be a virtual event. We have had some really good successes. The Gaisers Brook Festival has been held virtually. And really, you know, we've actually started to look at whether we would offer some additional books or book festival programming throughout the year to help facilitate that. Next slide. I wanted to mention some of the key departments because those are the most common places that we have the public interface. One of them is planning and code, permit and inspections. In phase one, we would be allowing for people to schedule an appointment. Those numbers are listed there and they would be able to work through the permitting process. We currently already have been providing those services virtually. But sometimes individuals would like to prefer to come and talk to somebody in person and that will be able to be accommodated. We will also be increasing inspections as we move forward in phase one. With phase two, we will expand those services to occupied buildings, kind of subject to the health and safety protocols that are recommended by industry and the CDC. On the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about neighborhood services and animal control. We have been providing exterior code inspections and animal control services in a limited capacity up to this point. And in phase one, which again would start on June fifteenth, those services will be expanded by providing appointment-based meetings and tree removal inspections. In phase two, further expansion would be provided by proactively inspecting rental housing, home-based business inspections and some interior property inspections. Community Services, next slide, is one of the departments who has been most impacted in terms of the COVID. They have done an outstanding job of providing needed services such as coordinating food distribution programs, housing assistance programs and connecting residents with area resources. They've probably had the most change in what type of programs they are offering and coordinating. So in this case, we would like all the other facilities asking in phase one, we won't be doing in-person appointments. We would be looking at trying to do those through email and teleconferencing. And as we move into phase two, the lobby area would be open for appointments and interactions related to that. The next slide will talk about police and public safety. As you know, our officers have been actively engaged in our communities, including coordinating community support events throughout the pandemic. The changes between the phases are really focused on opening up the lobby services, much of which has been done virtually. So paying tickets or getting case reports, that's all been handled virtually. So in phase two, we would open up the lobby for a little bit more activity. And then we would also be looking to try to support small community events permitted subject to the gathering number restrictions in place by the state or the county. Next slide. Another department that's been actively engaged since the initial stay-at-home orders were put in place has been the Public Works Department. As the phases move forward, we will be increasing services, some of those we have already started. The compost drop-off for food compost at the Public Works Facility reopened on May twentieth. Bulky item pickup resumed the first week in June and will continue on the regular schedule for now. Again, that schedule is basically the first week of every month on your recycling day. And then the curb leaf collection will occur in the fall as normally planned. Next slide. Probably one of the hardest groups of activities and services to determine when they might be available are those services and activities provided by the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department. These services are highly dependent on decisions by outside government agencies like the state and county health departments and other permitting agencies. In addition, you know, many of these services require registration lead times that will need to be factored in before they can officially resume. We have on parks, playgrounds and picnic pavilions, up to this point, we have allowed access to the parks for exercise and enjoyment. We will begin to open up picnic pavilions and playgrounds as soon as the gathering number restrictions, which is currently at ten or increased by the governor or the health county executive. Some of that's also dependent on the recommendations from the county health department. I would point out that in these facilities, since they are not staffed and really because they're outside facilities cannot be sanitized effectively. When they do open back up, we are asking residents to take the proper health and safety precautions and follow the CDC recommended guidelines when participating in these activities. The next slide, please. The Activity Center in phase one will be open for appointments, mostly for discussion about upcoming programs that are anticipated to be put on as part of phase two. In phase two, we will be expanding the use of the facility based again on the gathering restrictions and physical distancing protocols put in place by the state or the county. I will note that registration began today for approximately thirty virtual classes that will start at the beginning of July. In addition, we will be offering limited capacity outdoor fitness classes, including zumba, yoga, meditation, starting at the end of June. And again, those are dependent upon the gathering restrictions put in place by the state or the county. Next slide. KC Community Center really will be restricted in terms of its uses and rentals in phase one. We will be allowing individuals to come and talk or see those facilities for future rentals. That can be done by calling the number listed in the presentation. And again, as most facilities in the Parks and Recs, we will begin expanding the use of the facility in phase two based upon the gathering restrictions. One of the things to point out is many of our normal camp programs were traditionally held at school facilities. And they may not be available for city use during the summer. So we are looking at other options in case. So we are looking at other options. KC is one of those buildings that traditionally does not have a summer camp or a day camp. We would be looking at trying to operate one from there should they be allowed to operate under the state and county guidelines. Next slide. The Arts Barn Facility, it's probably one of our harder facilities too, although it does have a number of components. In Phase One, the facility will remain closed. In Phase Two, we will be opening up the lobby entrance and we will allow the gallery, given the restrictions in place by the state or the county. It's unlikely that any performances will be held until Phase Three, just based on how the facilities are laid out. And again, the Arts Barn is another one of those facilities that we might look towards repurposing as part of our summer daycare camp provisions. Next slide. Kettlin's Mansion is very similar to the Arts Barn. The use and rentals will be restricted in Phase One. And as we move to Phase Two, we will allow for individual and group use, including rentals based upon state and county restrictions. Some of the more traditional summer programs, next slide, such as miniature golf. Under Phase One, the facility will remain closed and we'll begin preparing for the activities. In Phase Two, we will be open for entry based upon the restrictions put in place by the state or the county. We are looking at ways to kind of facilitate that through time slot reservations, and those will be announced on our website. Probably the one, next slide, the one that we get the most questions about, of course, because it's summer and it's already 90 degrees, is the water park. And the water park again is one of pretty complex program that we actually offer in the sense that there's a lot of permitting related to Montgomery County health in normal years. And in this year in particular, there will be additional safety and protocols required in order for us to receive our permit. Currently, the county is determining all those safety and health protocols and still trying to determine whether they would allow permits for public pools to be accessed during the summer. Another complication that we have too is that the pool takes a large number of part-time staff to operate. And as you know, we currently would be open by now. We have not hired those staff, although most of them are on standby. It will take us some time once the county and the state announces. I guess the state's already announced pool openings, but when the county allows for pools to open, if it does, it will take us some time to train staff on the new protocols that would be in place under the permit. If we are allowed to open, we do want to make everybody aware that it's going to be a gradual opening. We would probably look at trying to operate swim lanes on an appointment basis for the first couple of weeks of that opening and then make determinations on whether we could safely open up the pool to additional activities. It is likely, if we're going to be able to do that, it would be in a limited capacity. We would not probably be allowed full capacity, and there may be some questions about whether we could actually operate all the slides that we currently have in the facility. So with that in mind, we would probably be limiting pool access to residents and members at least during Phase Two and implement other things such as requiring clear bags for anything that is brought into the pool, so we're not searching through individual backpacks or other containers. And then in closing, next slide. I just want to thank the residents for their understanding as we begin to restore service and assure them that part of this decision process is how we can best ensure the health and safety of both the users of our facilities and staff. And I also really want to thank staff for all the work that has gone into developing these plans and their dedication to serve the community during this challenging time.
Thanks very much, Dennis. I know we all appreciate how difficult this time has been, how I hate to overuse the word unprecedented because everybody's been using it, but but just to, just to figure out not only how are we going to, you know, sort of close down, but maintain essential operations and then come back out of it. We just, there's not a playbook for it, and we appreciate the work you put into it. And by the way, the slides look great. Those are, you've found some really good pictures for those slides. We, I have a feeling Neil, Neil may want to ask about the, about the farmer's market because we got a, we got sort of a very chastising angry email today. So I'm gonna, he hasn't raised his hand, but I'm gonna point to Neil right now. Go ahead, Neil.
All right, thanks. And I spoke to Dennis about that issue this afternoon as well. But yes, as, as the mayor pointed out, we had a fairly testy email this afternoon from a resident who was not understanding why the farmer's market has not reopened. And in fact, we, we understand that throughout the county, many farmer's markets were never closed down at all or some were closed down and then reopened. So can we address that directly and where, what our city's position is on that and what the issues are with reopening the farmer's market here?
Yeah, I believe, you know, when the initial stay-at-home order went into effect, one of the concerns we had particularly with the Kettlin's Market was the amount of space that was required in terms of distancing and the numbers. One of the other complexities that we have with our farmer's markets is they're not staffed. And so trying to assure compliance with those parameters is something that we've been discussing with the vendors. We are reevaluating the situation, you know, as we speak, and we'll probably be looking at trying to open those back up. I will note that we did have a really unique program where Gaithersburg actually worked with a number of vendors that would do home delivery and then provided that information to the residents where they could call up pre-order and then the farmer's market or that vendor would deliver it. So we are looking at trying to make modifications, and as I noted before, as the circumstances changes, we are able to modify the plan and adapt and probably will be opening up those farmer's markets in the near future.
Any questions, comments for Dennis? Go ahead, Ryan.
I just want to offer my praise to Dennis and all the staff who were involved in putting this plan together. This is comprehensive, particularly when you consider the scale of our jurisdiction relative to the county and the state and federal governments that are all grappling with putting together plans and directives for how to do this. The fact that staff was able to come together and build our own rather specific individualized plan in these times, I think, you know, really speaks extraordinarily well to all the staff who worked on this. So I think it's so great, in fact, that, you know, in my role as president of the Maryland Municipal League, I've been asked to reach out to municipalities who have reopening plans that could be used as templates or even just to help create a bank of sample plans for our member municipalities around the state to use, take a look at, rely on. When I saw the Gaithersburg plan and the background materials for tonight's meeting, I immediately forwarded on to the MML staff because I just thought it was such an excellent template for potentially other municipalities to look at and, and work from. So again, thanks to all of staff for putting this important document together. And we understand that it is an iterative document and it will depend on new information coming out from the state and the county in the coming days and weeks, but it's still an incredible piece of work product, so thank you. You've already highlighted, Dennis, the many questions that we're receiving from the community and the interests about things like playgrounds and pools. I know that you and the rest of staff will continue to keep the public updated on those kinds of things and summer camp programs as we're trying to work and figure out how to apply the county executive orders that, that covered Gaithersburg. Quick question about the passport services that we have provided at City Hall. Would they fall under Phase Two, Phase Three? How might that work?
I believe they're under Phase Two is when we're going to try to implement those on an appointment basis, just similar to what it is today.
Great, thank you. Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. Dennis, thank you for that very informative presentation. I think Ryan has given enough kudos, but I can't agree that, you know, we are very proud that we have a plan moving forward to respond as we slowly reopen the city. I was going to ask about PPE equipment. I know that the barriers were discussed, that they would be installed for one-on-ones or customer with visitors that come to the city for services. What if a visitor comes during the phase one or two when they don't have the proper equipment? Are we providing disposable masks to attendees? And then I wanted to ask about what we're doing for staff as they continue to come back and their PP equipment for our staff, our police officers, is it required or is it optional?
Yeah, as a component that we haven't presented here tonight, there's actually a kind of a sister document that goes with this, which kind of outlines the guidelines and expectations for staff regarding all the protocols related to reopening. And so we go through the different aspects of the PPE that we are providing to them. They're required to take training on that PPE. There are some common elements that are common, you know, applicable to all employees. And then some employees have additional equipment that their departments will be training on. And there's also additional cleaning protocols that staff will be implementing along with that PP and E in high-touch areas or in mailrooms or things like that. We will be providing, should someone come to City Hall, a mask for them and then hand sanitizer at each locations. And also, you know, the restrooms will be open for washing your hands. And so those have all been looked at. You know, the senior leadership team did a great job of doing this side document, which we call the Guidelines Document. Last week, we actually had department meetings with every department, sometimes down to division level based upon the size, explaining the document, talking through the document and how and what the expectations were for staff. I will note that we're still going to have a high telework component for those staff that can continue to do that, but we will provide minimal staffing to each of the facilities, the core facilities in Phase One, and then as we move to Phase Two, the other facilities depending on their use.
Okay, and I look forward to hearing about, you know, the future status of our summer camp programs. I'm just imagining kids like elementary school kids and forcing them to social distance during activities and during the summer and how challenging that is going to be. I just cannot imagine how you guys and Carolyn are going to make that decision, but look forward to hearing more. And then I had a question about our seniors. I know you said there's quite a few classes that are coming out virtually, and I was wondering if there are any programs for our seniors that are included in those.
Yeah, we actually have already been providing some programs to seniors. The Senior Center is a little bit different in that we have membership requirements, and so we're able to push those out a little bit easier because we have contact information. So even prior to Phase One, we have been doing some exercise programs with them and will continue to offer those. And as everybody knows, this population for the Senior Center are one of the at-risk groups. So the Senior Center is probably, it's going to be the, one of the last facilities we open. So that probably would not occur until Phase Three unless there's some change in the COVID epidemic.
Okay, all right. And my last question, well, no, that's it. That's it. Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, I just, I wanted to, oh, I see, we got Rob. We'll go to Rob and then we'll go to Mike.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dennis, for the informative presentation. Just two questions. One is, as I recall, when we were going to the telework scenario, we had essential personnel coming in. We had adopted a enhanced compensation plan, I guess, for hourly employees and for salaried employees. There was enhanced comp time, I think it was something like that. Is that still in place? And if it is, is, under what scenario does that get phased out or what considerations are you looking at with respect to each of the phases and providing that type of compensation scheme?
As you're aware, you know, the city, when it adopted its budget, looked at the impact of COVID and, you know, the reduction that we were anticipating was around $4 million in terms of revenue reduction. So about that same time, as you pointed out, initially when we went to teleworking and providing kind of essential services in March of this year, we did do time and a half plus some compensation for exempt employees. A few weeks back, we actually modified that plan based upon our financial situation or what we would anticipate the reduction in our financial revenues to be more of an hourly rate increase, and that was $5 if you had five public-facing positions and then 250 if you were just doing other positions that weren't publicly facing. And then we did eliminate the additional compensation to exempt employees. With Phase One, we would basically not do any compensation differential for any employees in the organization. We are still providing in terms of some flex time, in terms of some of the schedules for Police Department and Public Works to limit the number of people who are currently reporting to work and providing some additional time for those employees, either who have childcare or who don't have enough work, teleworking, official leave. That will also start to be phased out as we reopen our facilities in Phase.
Okay, thank you. And so the second question is, I guess, not necessarily related to the phased reopening of city services, but more related to the legacy outcome on the impact, legacy impacts on our workforce and how we manage our workforce in situ or remote. And I would just encourage, as we're looking at phase reopening, we do lessons learned on how we can bring our workforce's situation into the 21st century and adopt flexible and telework policies that will go well beyond this, this temporary situation of, you know, where we have telework. Not necessarily a part of this presentation, but just wanted to point it out that that is a heavy emphasis of mine. And I would encourage staff to think of ways to carry the idea forward beyond the temporary situation we're in.
I think every city in the nation is reevaluating what its workforce looks like and where it reports to, along with other businesses in our community and across the nation. So we will be definitely looking at that. We've already had discussions at the senior leadership team level about what that might look like. And the hope would be we would have some definitive kind of conclusion of what our structure would look like before or about the same time we move to Phase Three.
Mike.
Yeah, that last point, you know, I think when we voted on the strategic plan in our last meeting, I, I did mention, I thought, in terms, both in terms of city administration and in the services that we provide, that we, we needed to look forward about how we were going to make all of these things available in the event that this happens again and the fact that we're still in the emergency that we are. And I think it bears repeating that even though things seem to be letting up and I think people are more relaxed about reopening and wanting to get out, there is a sense of safety that isn't, isn't supported by the evidence out there. We, you know, it's not safe out there for many people. It is still a very virulent virus, highly infectious, and none of us are safe from it until there's a vaccine, and a vaccine won't be available for at least, well, not before the end of the year. It's unlikely to be available not before the end of the year. It's unlikely to be available until the end of the year. And even then, we don't know the level of safety that that's going to provide. So there are still many people that are very vulnerable to this. And certainly infection is going to affect people differently. Some people will hardly feel it and other people, it's, it's going to be fatal for others. So we have to keep that in mind. And I think I didn't, I wasn't a recipient of the flaming email today or whatever it was that, that several of you referred to earlier. So I don't know what that is. And I understand the frustration of people that want to get out and want to resume life as normal, but life isn't going to be normal until we have a vaccine, until we have herd immunity. That's, that's years away. So I think the precautions that staff has taken and worked together to develop this plan are well-constructed and doing, you know, providing what the best we can provide in terms of protecting both the staff and all of the residents and our consumers of our services as much as possible. We have to keep that in mind, but I don't think we should. I think that, that we're, we're taking the right appropriate precautions and doing it carefully and providing and using the guidance provided both by the county health department, by the CDC and by our own personal judgment and professional judgment. So, look, I work for a major health agency in the United States, National Institutes of Health. I've been able, unfortunately, I've been able to telework for 10 weeks now. In my particular job, my institute, we are not going back to work onsite probably until the fall. So you know, I, I think from my perspective as a scientist, as a, as a health, health professional, health scientist professional, there's something to be said in observing how many agencies are going back to work. And the reason it's taking time is because I think we're following the important, we're taking the appropriate precautions and we're being very cautious about it and other, you know, that's, that's the phase that, that we're going through. So keep that in mind and I hope the public keeps that in mind. And I hope, you know, we're asking the public to be patient. This, hopefully this is the only time this is going to happen in our lifetime. But precaution is, is, is what we need to take at this point. And we're doing this for everybody and not just to make lives, you know, there, there's good intentions here. And I think that's what's important. So thank you for all the planning that staff has done. And thank you for the planning that we're going to do going forward in terms of both how we operate our services and, and take care of our citizens. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Dennis, I it seems like you're, you're dealing with some universal appreciation here for, for what you've put together. So thank you. Do you have any, anything more or?
Really just to say, it's really staff. I mean, it's everybody coming together, developing the plans, understanding the plans and then helping, you know, implement those plans. And as Mike pointed out, you know, there's always the potential that we might have to reverse those based upon what's happening in our own environment. And we are using safety as a primary goal when we re-implement services.
I, I had a quick question, Mayor. Dennis, I don't know, I, you mentioned that everyone in the staff is contributing to this program. Has, has staff been surveyed or to assess their concerns or?
One of the things, we haven't done a formal survey, but again, last week we held department meetings, you know, in some cases down to the division level where we had discussions about how people are feeling, if they had questions about the proposed plans. And that was just at the, the larger level. So there were members of the SLT, the supervisors and myself were in those meetings. And then the supervisors are also kind of individually meeting with staff and talking about these issues again. One of the things that we've also planned is to do some check-ins. So that first week that we open up, we will be doing citywide staff Zoom meetings, which are fairly interesting as an opportunity for staff to kind of give some feedback. How are things working? Are there additional concerns? We'll be doing two of those next week during that first part of phase one. And then as we move to each phase, we'll continue that process. So staff has the ability to kind of check in. And again, we've also reiterated that if staff is uncomfortable or has questions, they can check with their supervisor or the department head and even myself with any concerns they might have.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I had one last question. Are there, I didn't, I don't know if I may have missed it, but will there be temperature checks when we do start to reopen?
There won't be temperature checks for employees. We had a lot of discussion about whether that was practical for us and whether it really, you know, I think a lot of industries are doing it, but it's just one of the symptoms. So we have taken the approach of self-certification and asking the employees before they report to work each day to make sure they do that along with check to see whether they have any other symptoms. In addition to people coming into the facility, we will have signs posted on talking about those issues with them that they should make sure they are symptom-free before they come in. There will be some temperature taking probably if we are able to implement, you know, some of the camp programs or, you know, those programs will require under the CDC and health regulations, temperature taking of at least individuals who are attending those each day before they are admitted into the facility. But we will not be doing that wholesale to either staff or to the public in general. We felt there were better options and also just based on it's only one symptom. Just making people cognizant that they shouldn't come to work if they're sick or they shouldn't come to a city facility if they're sick. And that goes for not just COVID, but you know, if somebody gets a cold or other things, they are more likely to be, have a greater exposure risk, even if they come to a facility and, you know, something happens. The reality is at some point, we will have someone test positive within our workforce. And we will take appropriate precautions regarding cleaning of facilities when that happens. If either someone who's using our facility or an employee tests positive, we do have protocols in place for sanitation and all of those things.
Okay.
So it could require us closing down a building for 24 hours is the current recommendation under CDC. So we may have to close down either a portion of a facility or the entire facility depending on what the exposure risk was.
Okay.
Loriann, it looks like you have inspired more questions. Ryan, did I see your hand up? Oh no, that was just a stretch. Okay. Before we go, anything from Lynn? You've been very quiet the whole time. Okay, easy meeting for you. Okay. Well, then this will conclude our two discussion items for this evening. I will note that this weekend, we do have, this is our last formal weekend of the book festival, virtual book festival programming. We have programs on Friday, Saturday, two on Sunday. We are working on sort of a bonus program, but we don't have a date for that yet and there'll be an announcement. Also wanted to note that it, the Watkins Mill interchange may be opening any day now. We got a, I got an email from S H A last Wednesday or Thursday asking if I would record a 30-second video of me, you know, that they can use as part of their virtual ribbon cutting for Watkins Mill interchange. And I did it, but I have no idea when it's going to air or what, what day it's actually going to open, but it may, it could be any day now. So.
May I say June 10th, Mr. Mayor? So if it's a different date, you're going to have a lot of irate people.
Okay, well, I, I don't know, I don't know that we should have the irate people. Maybe they'll come to us.
For not opening their interchange as promised.
Moco Show posted June 10th, so it must be true.
Okay, we had got June 10th as well. I just, I just hadn't heard for sure that that was, that was happening. So
We should prepare our own kind of virtual ribbon cutting.
Dennis, do you feel guided there?
I do. We can put something together. And it is, to our knowledge, it is June 10th and it's the full interchange.
Okay. All right. And last time I checked, June 10th is Wednesday. So that's coming right up. So could be. Rob?
I'm sorry, since we're on Watkins Mill interchange, can I just give extremely boisterous kudos to Dennis for, and, and for my community too, Dennis, for the installation of a, a traffic signal at Forest Preserve, which was not in the original plans at all. And it was through Dennis's efforts and coordinating with the state and the county that the signal is there. They were testing it today. So thank you.
And that again, it takes all staff. It's not just me. There are a number of staff behind the scenes talking with the county because that is actually a portion of the county's portion of Watkins Mill interchange. So we did not install the light. That's a county installation. As Rob has indicated, it has been a long journey for that installation.
So on that note, I think, yeah, there's some other intersections in the area that we're going to have to take a close look at in terms of traffic control and then streets through certain neighborhoods. We're going to have to be very observant about how that traffic might change coming up. So.
And we do have funding in FY21, Mike, as you know, for those particular improvements.
Great.
All right. All that said, next regular meeting of the mayor council is next week, a week from today, June 15th. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.